Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting at the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. Item number one is called to order. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/Chanel11. I'd like to invite everyone who's willing and able to please stand and join me for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much. Is Councilmember Devaro available this evening? Right. No, not yet. Okay, well, then, I'm going to ask then, Councilmember Chin, can you assist me with the meeting minutes this evening?
I would be happy to, Mayor.
All right, so we're going to go to item number 4A, Approval of City Council Meeting Minutes. Councilmember Chin.
I would like to submit for approval, move for approval, item 4A, 4A1.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Chin and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please, please vote. Councilmember Hodge?
Yes, aye.
Okay, and that item passes five to zero with Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Devaro absent. Next up, item 4B, Acceptance of Forward Commission and Committee Meeting Minutes. Councilmember Chin.
Mayor, I would like to submit for acceptance items 4B1 through 4B6.
It's been moved by Councilmember Chin and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item also passes five to zero with Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Devaro absent. Next up is item 5. 5A is Mayor's Reports and Announcements. I'm going to call upon a representative from Keller Williams Arizona Realty for a presentation. I'll go on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Great.
Thank you for having us today. We just wanted to take a moment. My name is Kiana Comer. I am from Keller Williams Arizona Realty. We've got multiple brokerages here in town, and we are from the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. We just wanted to take a moment to recognize Mayor Woods for all of the initiatives that he's doing throughout the city of Tempe around diversity, equity, inclusion, most importantly, inclusion. We look to find thought leaders in DEI throughout the communities here in town, and Corey Woods, Mayor, we just want to thank you for everything that you're doing and show extreme gratitude. We definitely look to you as one of our thought leaders out there, helping to move this diversity, equity, inclusion needle throughout the community. So, thank you, and we want to present you with an award.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I would like to just really quickly thank Keller Williams. I really appreciate this. You know, it really means a lot to me. DEI is something that's really critically important, not just to myself, but to the entire city council. Frankly, I also want to recognize our new Chief Diversity Officer, Dr. Belisa Humes, who's here as well. There she is. And I want to see too, forward this photo, if the council could join me and if Dr. Humes could join me up here as well, because I always talk about, when we're talking about diversity, equity, inclusion, it's not just simply one person. I'm fortunate enough to be the mayor, but it frankly is a team effort that involves all members of city council and staff. So, just wanted to, once again, say thank you to Keller Williams for this award. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right, y'all ready? Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you.
We appreciate all of your support.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[410.13]
Going so close overhead. And number one, there is already a Tempe Entertainment District right over here. It's called Mill Avenue. And your focus should be on keeping that a vibrant area, having an environment where businesses can thrive, businesses and restaurants can thrive along and near Mill Avenue, along Seventh University, all around this area over on Maple. This, I think, should be the focus of an entertainment district. I came here 15 years ago. I know, I was here 15 years ago when there was a Fiesta Bowl over here, and it was a lot more vibrant than it is today. So I think that should be your focus, is keeping Mill Avenue vibrant.
Okay. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the City Council? Please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. And I'll move on to item number seven, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public, they remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with the disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. The consent agenda this evening is listed as miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A6, awards of bids and contracts, item 7B1 through 7B11, and resolutions, item 7C1 through 7C4, with the exception of item 7A5, which was removed from the agenda at the request of tax and licensed staff. Once again, any item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. I do have one card here for item 8C1 and 8C2, looks like. Yep. But if there are any other items that people would like to have removed that are listed as public hearing items, please get my attention now. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public wishing to address the council on any item?
No, Mayor, we have nothing additional.
Sounds good. I'll look to my colleagues of any items that you would like removed for separate consideration.
7C3.
Councilwoman Garland is asking for 7C3. Any other items, council? Councilwoman Navarro, are you with us?
I am.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, sir. All right, so then with that, I'm just going to go ahead and once again read the, what we'll be approving here is the consent agenda, miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A6, awards of bids and contracts, item 7B1 through 7B11, and resolutions, items 7C1 through 7C4, with the exception of 7A5, which was removed by tax and licensed staff, and item 7C3, which was removed for separate consideration by Councilwoman Garland. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, been moved by Councilwoman Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. Councilwoman Navarro?
Aye.
And that item passes six to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent. Now, moving on here to item 7C3, which was the item that was removed for separate consideration. And that item is to adopt a resolution approving a green power partners agreement with Arizona Public Service for the purchase of up to 12,700 megawatt hours of renewable energy to advance the Tempe Council goal of achieving 100% renewable energy in city operations by 2050 to a total of 35%. This was removed by Councilwoman Garland. So Councilwoman Garland?
I'm going to defer to Councilmember Chin to speak first.
Sure. Councilwoman Chin?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Mayor, I just wanted to point out that this is a great partnership. I think the city and our sustainability team has been desiring to work closely with a good partner on an initiative such as this. I think this advances our municipal carbon neutrality goals, and I hope this becomes a model for other organizations. Simply that.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Councilwoman Garland?
Thank you. I agree exactly with what Councilmember Chin said. The carbon neutrality in the city of Tempe, doing a partnership like this will help us achieve that goal in 2050. The APS partnership also helps Tempe achieve its goal to power 100% of city facilities with renewable energy by 2025. And through this partnership, Tempe will achieve a total of 35% renewable energy in city operations. And I just want to say that again, I appreciate the partnership also, and anything we can do to work with other organizations to help the city reduce its reliance on fossil fuels is a good thing. So that's all I want to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilwoman Garland. Any councilmembers, any further comments or questions? Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Keating. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. Councilwoman Navarro?
Aye.
And that item passes six to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent. Next up, we have item number eight, which is the non-consent agenda. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon tonight at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. The first section here is item 8A, which is miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. First item is 8A1, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Tempe Union High School District and the city of Tempe for seven full-time permanent positions for the provision of school-based intervention programming services for the next five years. Council, any comments of discussion? Councilwoman Hodge?
I guess this is for clearance. Is it, do I have to sustain from this, or am I allowed to vote on it because it's Tempe Union and I'm a governing board member?
Councilmember Hodge, I believe if you are on the Tempe Board, you should probably abstain from the vote.
Okay, sounds good. All right, any other comments on this item? Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Garland, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes five to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent and Councilmember Hodge abstaining. The next item under the section is 8A2, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Tempe Union High School District and the city of Tempe for five temporary positions for the provision of school-based intervention programming services for one year. Council, any comments or discussion?
Yes. I will be abstaining because of a conflict of interest, being on the Tempe Union High School Governing Board. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Hodge. Any other further comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes five to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent and Councilmember Hodge abstaining. The next item under the section is 8A3, which is to approve one-year contract renewals with Duwah Chemical Inc., Hill Brothers Chemical, Cam Group Incorporated, and Thatcher Company of Arizona Incorporated for the purchase of water treatment chemicals for the municipal utilities department. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, is there a motion? Moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Aye.
That item passes six to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent. The next item under the section is 8A4, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing a maximum dollar amount for an individual job order of up to $4.1 million for the purpose of procuring construction services for the US-60 emergency water transmission main repairs McClintock Drive, project number 3202022C3. Council, any comments or discussion? Moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
That item passes six to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent. The last item under the section is 8A5, which is to approve a change order allowance to job order number 12 for FPS Civil LLC for the US-60 emergency repairs at McClintock Drive project. Council, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilwoman Garland. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes five to zero with Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Keating absent. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for December 15, 2022. First item here is 8B, ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. 8B1 is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment and approve a final subdivision plat for the Caliendo residents located at 1100 East Knox Road. The applicant for the zoning map amendment is Birch in Cracchiolo, PA, and the applicant for the final subdivision plat is Gilbert Land Surveying, PLC. Is there any presentation on this item? Or any comments from Mr. LeBeck? Good. Presentation, you don't have to, but you can if you want. Or I should ask here, is there any, first of all, since the representative is coming forward, is there anyone in the audience who has any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, councilmembers, do you have any questions on this item? I don't either. It's your choice if you'd like to say something, but if not, no worries either.
I was only going to say, if you want a presentation, I'll give one. If not, we'll take your, we'll take it as is.
Sounds good.
I think, yeah, I think, I think.
Oh, you want the presentation? Oh, okay, all right.
Community to be able to see what we're voting on. I think it does not feel super long.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, for your record, my name is Brian Greathouse, here on behalf of the Caliendos. This is a very simple rezoning case, which is essentially a lot line adjustment for a single-family home. If it seems complicated, it's only because I didn't describe it well enough. It's a small site that's located east of Rural Road on the north side of Knox Road. Essentially, what's going on here is the Caliendos own Lot 1. The Caliendos had owned Lot 2 on your screens. The Caliendos sold Lot 2 to the Flores family, and the Caliendos wish to retain the area that's labeled as site and outlined in yellow there. So they want to combine the site into Lot 1. What that does is it creates two different zoning districts on one single-family home lot. So it would be a R115 lot and an agriculture, AG, zoned lot. So to make those match, it's simply a request to rezone from AG to R115 on that small little portion. That will allow the Caliendos to expand their backyard, to have a little larger area for their dogs to run around. That's it. Thank you.
Sounds good. Any comments or questions from council? Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, since there's no other additional comments or discussion on that item, just want to reiterate, the second and final public hearing for this item is scheduled for December 15, 2022. The next item under the section is 8B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a water line easement located on the west side of Harrell Avenue and north of the mineral road alignment. Are there any speakers in the audience wishing to address the City Council on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none. The second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for December 15, 2022. The last item under the section is 8B3, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a development and disposition agreement with the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Incorporated, a nonprofit corporation, for vacant city-owned property located at 1014 East Curry Road, Tempe, in order to convey property, covenants, deeds, and other related documents necessary to effect such conveyance and related transactions. Council, any comments or questions? All right. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and want to reiterate, second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for December 15, 2022. Next up here, items for second public hearing and final adoption. These items were read and introduced on November 3, 2022, and votes on these items will be taken this evening. First item here, 8C, ordinances, items for second hearing and final adoption. 8C1 is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from GID to MU4, a planned area development overlay, and approve a development plan review consisting of 308 units, including four live-work units, and 3,069 square feet of commercial use for Perry and Rio Solado located at 1891 East Rio Solado Parkway. The applicant is Gamage and Burnham, and I see Mancha LaVaz from Gamage and Burnham in front of us. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, for your record. Mancha LaVaz, Law Firm of Gamage and Burnham, made a presentation last week, so certainly won't make another one unless you'd like one. I just wanted to say, we've had the opportunity to talk to Councilmember Garland. We talked a little bit about parking. At the same time, I've had some time to talk to Breanna and Brayden in relation to Councilmember Hodge, Councilmember Chin's comments regarding solar, and I'll be working with them as they're putting together, as you know, an ordinance relating to EV chargers and solar. So we're meeting to kind of work through that, and as certainly solar technology is changing, we are going to work with them and try to make sure that we have solar technology as part of our EV chargers. So I just wanted to report back on that, that we discussed a couple of weeks ago. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Keating?
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Vaz, for the work around the solar and the EV parking, and, you know, colleagues asked you for something and you delivered, and it makes these kind of processes so much easier and pleasant. So I really appreciate you doing that. So with that, I move to approve.
Okay. Really quickly, actually, I've got to take public comments. Okay, perfect. Anyone else on the council, any comments or questions for Ms. Vaz?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, I have one speaker on this item who's registered. It's Andrew Marwick. Please come forward. State your name, place your breath. You have three minutes to address the council.
Andrew Marwick, thank you, Mayor Woods and City Council. Andrew Marwick, Phoenix. One of the issues, I've looked at the pluses and minuses of this development. It fits in pretty well with the developments along the, further east, along the south side of Rio Solado Parkway. The only issue I, one of the two issues I have with it is 1.2 miles from where we are now according to Google Maps, which is pretty far to walk. So it will make it pretty car-dependent out, getting out that far. Out here, it seems to be pretty far west in Tempe for walking. It includes, I believe, 455 parking spaces. So again, about 1.5 units per spaces per unit. So again, that indicates it's pretty car-dependent. It's also adding a lot of parking spaces. I just noticed that ASU is putting up a huge parking garage at 10th and Mill. So again, this, all these developments like this one, ASU, there's just an incredible amount of parking. I don't know how many tens of thousands of parking spaces there are in this part of Tempe. It's a lot. And this adds another 455. So again, it makes it less attractive to have transit or walking if so much parking is available. One thing is, that I was looking at is, I used to work out at Pure Fitness about 15 years ago at Rural and University, Rural and Baseline, correction. And now I notice that that's now a nice apartment complex. So I think Tempe in general has done a pretty good job of putting up these apartment buildings like this. There's been a lot of them. There's a lot more that are under construction, a lot more have been approved. So I think this will fit in pretty well with what Tempe has done. So the pluses and minuses of it, I think this is a pretty good development and will be helpful in the long run for Tempe and the kind of thing that's been working pretty well here in Tempe. So I just wanted to pretty much give my opinion on this development. So I think, again, as I think it's going to work well for Tempe.
Thank you, Ms. Mark. We really appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the City Council on this item? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, any other further comments or discussion? Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes six to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent. Thank you so much, Ms. Vaz. Appreciate it. The next item under the section is 8C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt a resolution for a general plan projected land use map amendment from public open space to mixed use for approximately 1.66 acres, projected density map amendments from no density to high density for approximately 1.66 acres, and from medium to high density to high density for approximately 3.39 acres, adopted ordinance for a zoning map amendment from GID RSOD to MU4RSOD for approximately 5.04 acres, a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, and a development plan review for a new seven-story mixed-use development consisting of 319 dwelling units and commercial use on 5.04 acres for Madera Rio Solado located at 835 West Rio Solado Parkway. The applicant is Barry Riddell, LLC. I see Wendy Riddell coming up. Good to see you this evening.
Good to see you as well, Mr. Mayor. Wendy Riddell with the Law Firm, Barry Riddell, 6750 East Camelback. I think the hardest part of this case was reading all of that for the hearing tonight. We obviously have given a presentation on this case as well. I was fortunate to have a little bit of follow-up with Councilwoman Garland. I do believe the other question was asked by Councilman Navarro about the balcony sizes, and we have taken that into account too, with the average size being about 72 and then ranging all the way up to 100 square feet is our balcony. Happy to give a full presentation, but I recognize we've had a couple of long council meetings already. So I'm happy to.
Whatever do you mean?
Also keep it short.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Riddell. Anyone else? I know we've had a presentation previously. Does anyone on the council want another presentation?
No.
Okay. Sounds good. Let me go ahead and open it up to the public hearing portion then for a brief second. I've got one card for this item, and the card is here from Andrew Marwick.
This is when I spoke, before I got accepted.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so, thank you, sir.
Appreciate that. All right, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmembers, any further comments or discussion?
Yes.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And is Vice Mayor Adams available?
No, she is not.
She's not? Okay. Then that item passes six to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent. And I should say, oh, that was, there were two votes here. Excuse me. That was the first vote, which was just for the general plan projected land use map amendment and projected density map amendments. So I just wanted to make sure that I cited that for the record, and that did require a two-thirds city council majority, which is five out of seven, and since there were six people, that does pass. The second vote actually is on the zoning map amendment, planned area development overlay, and development plan review. Is there a motion on those items?
So moved.
Sounds like it's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Garland. This one just requires a simple majority of the council. Please vote.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keating?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did yes.
And is Vice Mayor Adams available?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No? Okay. Well, then that item passes six to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent. Thank you so much, Ms. Riddell. Appreciate it. The next item under the section is 8C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from AG to AGH Agricultural District with a historic overlay property designation for Guadalupe Cemetery located at 4649 South Beck Avenue to facilitate the designation of Guadalupe Cemetery in the Tempe Historic Property Register. The applicant is the town of Guadalupe. Does council need a presentation on this item?
No.
Okay, sounds good. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the City Council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any additional comments or discussion?
So moved.
Been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes six to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent. The next item under the section is 8C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 2 of the Tempe City Code relating to officers and employees by updating the deputy city manager roles, including adding a chief deputy city manager and an assistant city manager by amending Chapter 2, Article 3 relating to departments by establishing the Communication and Marketing Office, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Office, Education, Career and Family Services Office, and Government Relations Office, and renaming the Human Services Department to the Community Health and Human Services Department, and the Strategic Management and Diversity Office to the Strategic Management and Innovation Office, and by amending Chapter 2, Article 5 relating to boards, commissions, et cetera. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the City Council on this item? I would be shocked. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Moved by Councilmember Keating?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Aye.
That item passes six to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent. The next item under the section is 8C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance to transfer a portion of the unencumbered budget appropriation from the Human Services Department to the Education, Career and Family Services Office to provide sufficient budget appropriation to enable this new office to perform its various functions. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes six to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent. The last item under the section is 8C6, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance to transfer a portion of the unencumbered budget appropriation from the city manager's office to the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Office, the Government Relations Office, and the Communication and Marketing Office to provide sufficient budget appropriation to enable these new offices to perform their various functions. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Hodge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes six to zero with Vice Mayor Adams absent. That moves us to item number nine, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I will call upon councilmembers this evening for their comments, and this evening, looks like we will be starting with Councilmember Chin.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. We're starting with an announcement. There it is. The next Sustainability and Economic Vitality Council Committee will be on Monday, December 12, here in council chambers, or you may attend virtually and participate via WebEx. During that meeting, we'll have an update on the streetcar, Cool Pavement Initiative, and a final review of the committee work plan. And you can also access information online from the city website. The next announcement is, I would like to congratulate the city of Tempe Kickball Team. I don't see, apparently the audience is still outside that wants to meet the Kickball Team. I'd like to have a, I'd like to give a special shout-out to our team manager and our lead coach, Sean Wagner. I don't appreciate how many laps he made us run. There were no major injuries to report this season. We were all very excited to participate in this, the season that was organized and coordinated by the Downtown Tempe Authority, and it was great to meet several other Tempe organizations that had teams. We are taking sign-ups for next season.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chin. Next up is Councilwoman Garland.
I have a few. So the first one I have is Tempe Center for the Arts. You guys can see what's going on outside if you were in chambers. It is, starts tomorrow. It's Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It's 10:00 AM to 5:30. There's artwork, there's great Christmas gifts. That's what my list is going toward tomorrow. And there's food and music and lots of fun, so I hope that you can come out and join that one. The other one is the Boat Parade. So the Boat Parade is going to be coming up on December 10. It is so much fun to see the Boat Parade. If you haven't been out there, you really need to go out there and try that. The parade starts at 6:00 PM. The photos with Santa is going to be there at 7:00, and fireworks are at 8:00, and that's always a lot of fun. Hope you can come out there for that one. And then I have, the other one is Second Sundays.[1748.33] It's a smaller version of the Tempe Arts Fair, but it's starting up again, and the first one's going to be December 11. It starts at 10:00 a.m., and it goes to 3:00 p.m., and that's also a lot of fun, food, arts, and music, and that's really great. And then I have, I don't have a slide for this one, so don't have to worry about this one, Eddie. So I just want everybody to mark their calendars. We just scheduled our next Backstage Pass. It's going to be at the Tempe Library, and it's going to be a lot of fun. We're going to be able to get into some little, some really cool areas of the library, learn about some of the activities that they have, learn about their volunteering opportunities that you might be able to have if you get out there. They've got some great programs. Get a library card. Really fun thing, it's going to be, so it's Saturday, January 21, and it's going to be at 10:00 in the morning. So one other fun note is that my friend, Dave Muncy, he's an Emmy Award-winning weatherman from this, who lives in Tempe. He's going to come, and he's going to talk about his, the two books that he wrote, so he's going to be there first. Muncy Business is absolutely hilarious. His small-town, South Dakota and North Dakota, he's going to get me for this one, because I can't remember. I think it's South Dakota. Growing up to being a weatherman out here, he's, he's very, very funny. And the other one is, he's got a kid's book called Lance Fart Pants. So there you go. Probably the only council member ever in history to say fart on the dais. But there you go. That's the name of his book. It's going to be really fun, but he's going to come out there. So adults, kids, come out and listen. Again, it's Saturday, January 21, and it's 10:00 in the morning, and I hope you guys can join us.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. I was waiting all night for you to read that book title, so. Next up, I have Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you. Our first thing, I just wanted to highlight that on Friday, the November 25, we had our Downtown Holiday Streets Parade and the lighting, and we all draw, we all drove our carts, and no one wrecked anywhere, and we did a really good job with that, and it was a fun time. It was a really great time, and I want to thank Kate Borders for all that she did to make that successful. And next, just, no, just yesterday, I was at the, I was invited to the roundtable discussion with the Swiss Ambassador, and what's most important is, because he actually was in our city. He was at SRP facility, so we will, I gave him a real Tempe welcome, and he's excited, and he wants to come back and have more discussions about what we, what partnerships we can do in Tempe and businesses. So that's here to come. And a few weeks ago, I went on a tour of Tempe. I did the pre-K program. I went, I got a chance to visit four of our pre-K classrooms and enjoyed the fun with our kids, how much they're learning, the wonderful teachers we have. And Naomi Farrell, she took me around, and it was a phenomenal time. So if anybody gets a chance, please go out and visit our pre-K program. It is, it's doing very well, and our kids are striving extremely well. And December 3 is my next Breakfast with Burdetta, and with that Breakfast with Burdetta, it's going to be all around public safety and public health, especially around the holidays. I'm going to, and with the Super Bowl coming up and everything else with the Super Bowl and the water waste golf tournament, I would love for our safety with our Chief of Police and our Assistant Fire come out and CARE 7, and the Hope Team come out and have a discussion around table around that. So it's December 3, which is this Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30. So if anybody would like to come, you don't even, if you register, that would be great. We would love you to register, but just show up if you don't register. Please, come on out. Thank you. And also, last but not least, myself and Councilmember Keating had our rec meeting this past Monday. It was a great one. We had it around the library, and it was, we got a really in-depth conversation around that. So that's it. Thank you, guys. And everybody have a happy rest of their week.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Next up, Councilmember Keating.
I would like, though she may, though she is named after one of the most evil characters in fiction, I would like to wish my dog, Cersei, a happy seventh birthday. I cannot, I cannot believe I've had her for seven years. She was a very spirited pup, to say the least, but she's grown in to be a fantastic dog, and I love her very much. And that's it. You can see pictures of her. She's very cute. She's basically, she's a pit bull Chihuahua mix. I have several jokes on how that happened. None of them are appropriate for this meeting. But she's basically a 45-pound Chihuahua, so she's, she's a handful, but, but she's my baby. So happy birthday, Cersei. I'll be home soon.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Next up, Councilmember Navarro, do you have any announcements?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do have one. If it's on the screen, let me know.
Yep.
Okay. So this, next Wednesday, December 7, at 5:30 p.m. at the Watermark in Tempe, that's the high-rise building that's across the north side of Lake that has been developed. We're going to have a sit-down discussion at that building, and actually have a great view, not only of the building itself, but also the, what the development has done around Tempe Town Lake, and we're going to basically talk about more potential economic ideas that have, or future plans that we have for the lake, and really just kind of showcase the attractions that we have there, and just listen to the audience that might attend. I know we have some people that are planning on attending, or we would love to have anybody who would love to come out, but just to kind of like voice your opinion and concerns, and also the ideas of what we want to do with our Tempe Town Lake as we start developing in and around the lake, and how that's going to affect not only us, but even tourism, but also the residents. So we want to make sure that we have everybody's opinion out there. Please come, December 7, at 5:30 p.m. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Appreciate it. That leaves me. I've just got a couple of quick announcements. So I will say, honestly, one of the best parts of the mayor's job is when you actually get feedback from residents that tell you that they're exceptionally proud to be residents of the City of Tempe, and let you know about their very positive experiences with many of our employees. So we have a longtime resident and a friend to all of us here on this council, Catherine Mayorga, who wrote to me this week to share her experiences with a few employees as well as a council member. She mentioned that it had been a really difficult year with caring for her ailing mother and her passing. The stress of that was magnified by some issues in her neighborhood with rental property behaviors as well as disputes. She first reached out to Councilmember Navarro just for assistance, and she was genuinely pleased with the way then staff got involved to address and correct the issues, and they communicated with her every step along the way, and that is one of the most critical things around here. It's not about just simply getting the work done, but it's also having conversations with the residents to let them know exactly where things currently stand in the process, and it's one of the things our Tempe employees are so exceptional at doing. They're not only technical experts, but they also very much care about each and every person who lives in this city. And on behalf of Catherine Mayorga, I wanted to make sure to recognize the professionalism and kindness of Assistant Police Chief Andre Anderson, Community Development Director Jeff Tamilevich, Chief Deputy City Manager Rosa Nchowsi, and of course, on the phone this evening, Councilmember Joel Navarro. And to quote something that Catherine said directly to me, "These people are gems who represent the city with pride and dedication for the good of our community." So to each and every one of them, to Chief Anderson, to Jeff Tamilevich, to Rosa Nchowsi, and to Councilmember Navarro, just wanted to pass along our longtime resident Catherine Mayorga's praise of all of the work that you do on behalf of the City of Tempe. So thank you. And my last announcement, I think we have a slide for that one. It is for our soon-to-be-departing Chief of Staff, but who is taking a job as the Assistant Secretary of State for our incoming Secretary of State, Adrian Fontes. I just wanted to read this. He put out a really wonderful announcement about her today. Keely Barbell is a veteran government agency administrator, public policy advisor, and political communication strategist. She has a 30-year career spanning both the legislative and administrative branches of government at the local, state, and federal level in Arizona. Beginning her career as a congressional staffer for U.S. Congresswoman Karen English, Keely went on to work for several years at the Arizona State Legislature for both the Senate and House Democratic Caucuses in various roles, including policy advisor, communications director, and chief of staff. Keely was the deputy director of Governor Janet Politano's Office of Children, Youth, and Families, and later was appointed to oversee administration of workforce-related programs, and then strategic agency initiatives at the Arizona Department of Economic Security. In addition to her policy and public administration background, Keely is a seasoned election official, holding a Certified Elections and Registration Administrator credential from the National Association of Election Officials and Auburn University. When Adrian Fontes was Maricopa County Recorder, Keely served as Chief Deputy Recorder and oversaw the operations and management of the Recorder's Office and Elections Department. With over 2.4 million registered voters, Maricopa County is the second-largest voting jurisdiction in the entire country. Currently, Keely is our Chief of Staff, but she will be leaving us soon. I think December 9 is her last day, and we're really going to miss having you here. She's been a wonderful addition to the city staff, but we always love when our employees go on to other things, and this is obviously an incredible appointment. It's actually the first appointment by Secretary-elect Fontes. She was chosen by the Arizona Business Journal as one of their 40 Under 40 in 2009, and was awarded Best Capital Staffer for the Arizona Capital Times in 2013. She was honored with the Medallion Award by the National Association of Secretaries of State in 2021 for her leadership of the Maricopa County Elections Department during the challenges of the 2020 election. Keely is also a member of the City of Phoenix Historic Preservation Commission, appointed to the post by Phoenix Mayor Kate Gallego in 2022. It's quite a bit, but honestly, she's got a long distinguished career at the local, state, and federal level, and we're really, we're sad to see her leave here at Tempe City Hall, but she's contributed a tremendous amount during her time here, and we're just really excited to see you become the next Assistant Secretary of State for the state of Arizona. With that, I'm going to go to item number 10, public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council? Would, if so, please come forward and get my attention. Seeing none, we are adjourned at 7:04 p.m., everyone. Have a great rest of your weekend.